I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of August 13, 2020, at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simtski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gander?
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Okay, and again, would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome everybody. This is still kind of a hybrid meeting. We have trustee clerk and myself here and the rest of the board is participating through Zoom.
Well, we got Linda.
Yeah, trustee and me and clerk. There's three of us here in open forum. Does manager May, you got anybody who submitted any comments or questions?
We have no electronic comments submitted this evening.
And no one here, so we'll move on to reports. Mine's the first one. And again, I mentioned we're continuing to hold the hybrid meetings, but the public is invited to attend. They're more than welcome to be here if they want to participate in the open forum or they have an item on the agenda. We welcome that. Just so everybody realizes that if there's a agenda item that has, we anticipate a large number of people, we would move it to the high school auditorium. Our P&amp;Z Planning and zoning last night met there because this room cannot accommodate more dozen people when it's social distancing. So at this point, I'd ask Chief Riley, a lot of COVID-19 information have been shared on every broadcast on TV, and I'd ask him to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor. So relatively, we've been looking pretty good here in Westmont the last couple of weeks. We've only had two new cases in the last two days, so Westmont currently is sitting at 442 cases. We're currently sitting at 12,589 cases in DuPage County, along with unfortunately 521 deaths. Some of the raising concerns that I have is our case rates are continuing to rise in DuPage County, but the death rates remain low. Emergency room visits are continuing increasing and concern about possible lag of more serious cases and hospitalizations and deaths. Our positivity rate in DuPage County is about 4.1 and in the state of Illinois is about 4.2. So again, as my message is every couple of weeks for board meetings is we need to continue to social distance, continue to wear face masks when out in public or in stores or in local restaurants and bars, and again, continue to wash hands and remain diligent of what we are doing in the public. So unless there are any questions, Mayor, it's a relatively good report this board meeting, but again, we need to continue to doing the right things in our community to protect one another.
Any comments, questions? Well, thank you, Chief. I'll move on to Clerk Simtski.
I just want to report that the village-wide yard sales was a big success this year, so I think a lot of people got rid of things they wanted to get rid of, and I know my neighbors did, so anyway, we're very pleased with the way it went. And then I just have to wish happy birthday to my husband today.
Happy birthday, Jerry.
Happy birthday, Jerry.
To sing it, though.
There we go. Just a comment on the garage sales and even the block parties. We're not giving permits. We're not authorizing them because we can't endorse violating any of the social distancing or the numbers, but the individuals on their property can hold them. So when we say garage sales, we listed it on our website. It showed the homes that had it, but it wasn't permitting. We weren't giving any permits.
Yeah, it's subject to the governor's orders in the state of Illinois, but no additional permit is required from the Village of Westmont.
I just found out I can't get a permit to close my street for my block party, so...
Right, rejected.
Yeah, they rejected it. So moving on, trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is September 24th at 4:30 PM. Hopefully, we'll all be maybe in Village Hall by then. Our new Public Works building is 77% complete. If you haven't seen it, drive by and check it out. All garage doors have been installed. Elevator will be installed next week, so we're making some progress. 61st Street and Richmond Detention Basin rehabilitation project has started and hopefully will be completed by the end of the month. We shall see. Moving on, the Ogden Avenue Media Project is underway. I think we can all see the good progress they're making finally on that resurfacing project. And then other item we have is Alley C, the project between Norfolk and Naperville, has also begun and hopefully will be wrapped up early November. A couple other comments, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the police department. They're continuously monitoring some speed issues where it happened in Oakwood, and they're doing a great job. We think the signs, the friendly reminders with the strobes are making a positive impact. The data shows that, so hopefully we continue with that. And I'd also like public, I think Public Works, Jim Case specifically and Mike Ramsey. When Mike was gone on PTO for about a week, we had an issue with a resident having some interest in water seepage or some drainage problems in the parkway. And I went and checked it out, and I know staff has been there a few times, and we got our contractor out, found an issue with the slow leaking pipe and sealed it up in a relatively quick period of time. So I appreciate you jumping on that. I know the resident was a lot more relieved than he has been battling this. And then I'll let everybody meet Louis Nero, who's in the background, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Wow, thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. We had an Administration Finance Committee meeting at 4:30 today. Just, I'm going to be really, really brief. The health and wellness program that we started January 1st, we have to look for a new provider for that. The second item was that the fire department is looking to re-up their one-year contract with GEMT for the emergency transportation. And then the last thing is our quarterly budget overview shows that we are not out of the woods yet, but we do appear to be on the right path. Thank you, Spencer. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Marie Johannik-Guzzo?
Thank you, Mayor. First, our next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be August 27th at 4:30. Not sure about being in Village Hall, so we will see. Announcements for the fire department. The fire department's annual fire prevention open house has been canceled this year due to COVID-19. The fire department will be hosting an open house virtually. More information is to come, and I do not have any announcements for the police. So thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight. Adalances to the Tierney, Joseph Tierney and the Pipek family, Charlie Pipek, both passed away this week, old timers in the community, and adalances to their families. Westmont First will meet again in September. As you know, we still have the census ongoing, and the Environmental Improvement Committee at our next meeting in September will have a presentation on the use of solar panels. That is all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And we've got trustee Barry, who is going to perform double duty. He's going to talk about economic development and also community development. Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of free money out there for the businessmen. There's a couple grants going on that, and one of them specifically has changed its approach. So the Choose DuPage Grant Program has relaunched their grant program, and this time they've taken out the provision where if you previously got PPP or EDL money, you were not eligible. So there's a lot of details. I won't go over them, but it is on the Choose DuPage Grant Program, and it's through choosedupage.com. And I know businesses that have done this. It's a quick process for the application, and Larry Forsberg has said within a week to two weeks, you should have your answer. Secondly, the Village of Westmont has created a small business retail grant. And again, Spencer informed us earlier that a lot of the businesses have yet to take advantage of it. Currently, it runs through the end of August, and this is for restaurants and also for sales tax-based businesses. So for more information on that, it is choosewestmont.com. And those are the two grants available. And again, Larry is available to anyone if there's questions, but we really encourage people to get these before they expire. We also, this last week, we had the Quincy Station groundbreaking, and the formal groundbreaking was held at Quincy Station on August 6th. And kudos to Drew at Holiday Properties and all involved in this project. This is really going to be the catalyst for our downtown, and we encourage everyone to check out the video of the ceremony and to look at the apartment layouts, really unique type things that they're going to have, dog washing stations and rooftop availability to take dogs out and so forth. So really a neat project, and we really are welcoming them to our town. And I'll kind of segue right into community development. At last night's community development meeting, the One North Cass Project got a positive recommendation on a five-to-one vote. So that'll be coming to us hopefully in either the next board meeting or in a couple. And then that is only going to piggyback off of the Quincy Station groundbreaking. And so again, that was all approved last night. And then there's also other exciting projects. The LA Fitness on 63rd and Cass is ready to go. If it wasn't for the restrictions, I believe they would be open at this point. The Mystery Grocer is again, ready to grow. We've heard rumblings that it may be January when they open as a big impact, but we'll keep that details as they come. The Starbucks, they hung their sign the other night, so I think people are getting the idea of how those are going to lay out in the retail end. And then also our medical office project at 303 West Ogden is moving right along. The FMC Nautatorium at Ty Warner Park is moving along. We have items on the agenda. They may be changing, but we are working with them to get their opening on schedule. The Cass Avenue Dreams Home Phase Two is now underway, and I know we're still working on them to have their ribbon cutting and so forth. I believe that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. None of our next meetings have been set at this point. Like so many things in today's world, we'll play that by ear. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll move on. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. I have two items. I'd like a board member to make a motion for the proclamation for the National Suicide Prevention Week and a proclamation for the National Payroll Week. Do I have a motion to remove those two?
Motion to remove those two items from the consent agenda?
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second to remove. I don't think I need a, don't even need a motion, just remove them.
I'll just remove them.
All right. Then we'll move on to the rest of the consent agenda, and I'd ask manager May to please read.
And kind of to identify the purpose for removing them from the consent agenda so that they get their individual attention and separate action.
They're here, yes.
So on the consent agenda this evening, our village board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held July 30, 2020. It's followed by finance ordinance number seven and the amount of $2,548,456.16. There is one purchase order for Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $20,875. That is the Chamber Annual External Funding Tourism Payment, one of two. Total of the purchase order with finance ordinance number seven is $2,569,331.16, and that completes the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve as read?
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
And trustee Barker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We've got the two proclamations that were removed that we're going to address individually. I'd like, we'll go with the first one, the National Suicide Prevention Week 2020, and I'd ask manager May to please read the proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation, National Suicide Prevention Week proclamation declaring September as National Suicide Prevention Month in the Village of Westmont. Whereas September 6th through 12, 2020 is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Week and is intended to help promote awareness. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, in 2018, there was more than 48,000 people died by suicide, roughly 132 per day. And whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death among adults in the United States, and whereas Westmont is no different than any other community in the country but chooses to publicly support in simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle to open minds, save lives, and restore hope. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time, to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. And whereas we can all help to prevent suicide. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Westmont, that September 6th through 12, 2020 will be designated as Suicide Prevention Week in the Village of Westmont.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. I'd ask for a roll call.
Were you the second?
You have visitors to...
Oh, is anybody, well, I'm going to vote on it, and I'm going to ask him to. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this point, I'd ask Chris Sweetec to, he's here for that proclamation. Chris is representing a group, awareness group, as well as he's suffered from a suicide. So Chris, floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. My quick background is, as many of you all know, if not everybody, back on December 30th, 2014, my son took his own life, completely. I had no idea it was going to happen, absolutely devastated, you know, my family as well as a lot of his friends. And to this day, we still don't know why, and we probably never will know. That's when I got involved with suicide prevention, because at the time, I was very ignorant. I was not smart. I didn't know what the signs were. So I proceeded to educate myself on them. Many, many websites out there have great information, and a few of them have a checklist. I went right down the checklist and found that my son had every single sign, but I didn't see it because I didn't know. So I encourage everyone, go out there, get educated on exactly what suicide warning signs are. And because one of the big things that I do every year because of that is I hold a fundraiser. This is the third annual motorcycle awareness ride for suicide. Every year, we raise, depending on how many motorcycles come out and other visitors, you know, to the event, we raise anywhere from $2,000 to $5,000 a year. And every penny of that gets donated right out to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So that's actually this Saturday. We're going to start out in Downers Grove, where we always, you know, we either start in Downers Grove or Lyle. And this year, it's going to be Downers Grove. We're going to head west. Then we're actually going through, I think it's seven or eight different municipalities. And we're going to have police escorts in almost every single one of them. So with that, then we're going to end up right here in downtown Westmont. So right now, we're looking anywhere from 50 to 100 motorcycles are going to be involved in this, and we've thrown special rules at them because we're ending in three different places, you know, to make sure that we don't have large congregations. So we're, and one spot is going to be the Dolce Cafe. The other one is going to be Johnny's Blitz, and then the third one is going to be over at Walsh's Bar and Grill. And the groups are going to be split up at the registration, and then they're going to be rotating at certain times, because we want to keep the, you know, due to COVID, we want to keep everything to an absolute minimum. They all know that face coverings are absolutely required. Keep their social distance. So we put those rules out to people, but we're getting a great response of people that want to come in. So if you don't have any questions for me specifically on that, I'm going to turn it over to a friend of mine, Joel Frieders, who's going to talk a little bit more about his organization.
If you want to join us remotely.
Yeah. All good? All right, thank you, Chris. Thanks, everyone, from Village of Westmont. My name is Joel Frieders. I'm an alderman in the United City of Yorkville, a few miles west of you guys. In 2017, I also suffered the loss of a good friend of mine who suicided, my friend Mike Malmoney, and probably the most popular person I've ever met, a person I enjoyed, thoroughly enjoyed being friends with. And at the time, just like many of his friends in the chocolate music scene, I had no idea that that could happen, and I had no idea what to do about it. In my own healing process, as while I was also being elected official, I had to kind of come to grips with a number of things that I had experienced previously, which included suicides of friends and teachers when I was in junior high and high school, as well as becoming college, which I had never actually taken the time to properly heal from. And what ended up happening, as an elected official, I was confronted by my mayor at the time, Mayor Gary Galinsky, and asked, what am I going to do about it? And I had no idea what the heck I was supposed to do about it, so the first thing I did was I started writing, because I am somewhat of a writer. So I wrote a proclamation called National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Proclamation that you guys adopted last year and again this year, thank you very much, which encouraged students to not only talk about suicide as actually being an issue, but to also give reference to services in the area that are providing direct mental health resources to the constituents, not just as a way of saying, here's the national hotline number of someone in trouble, but more importantly, to actually start talking about the things that are bothering you before they become an issue. In addition to those two, those two kinds, that suicide is an issue and there are resources available, the thing that you said just in the proclamation is that all you really have to do is make sure that you appreciate the people around you, and a simple handshake, hire a hump, go a really, really long way. Now, as I said, I'm an elected official out in Yorkville, but a couple of years ago, I was introduced to a group called Hope for the Day, and we partner with communities, businesses, police departments, city halls, these names, in bringing proactive mental health education and prevention into their community. We've said a number of ways, but one of the things that we do a lot are these mental health workshops. As you can imagine, COVID threw a wrench in a lot of our in-person education programming, but we've been able to pivot. And if you are ever looking for a 45-minute to an hour workshop on mental health, we do them twice a week, and they are 100% free, visit our website, hftd.org, hopefortheday.org. We'll do them Tuesdays at 11:00 AM and Thursdays at 1:00 PM, completely virtual, but we're encouraging people to start the conversation, or anyone in their lives or themselves, which is a crisis. And I'm sure we can all understand the fact COVID reality has completely changed the way that we have to interact with the outside world. And one of the things that we are still failing to do is recognize that it's okay not to be okay. You can see it on my shirt, on the 16th, you can see that covering of my hat. Every time that we have a conversation with someone, we have to understand that wherever they're coming from, it's not our job to judge them. But we do a lot of work in describing and explaining what stigma is and why that keeps us quiet, but more importantly, we must be talking with people on why they feel a certain way about a certain thing and why it's okay not to be. So again, thank you very much for what you do for us again. Mr. Chris Sweetec, I greatly appreciate you. I wish you well in your recovery, and I wish you could be there on Saturday, but unfortunately, I do have a couple kids that are in a socially distant support, so why would be helping them? But we have also just recently partnered with the Westmont Public Library and the RISD Association Curriculum that we like to provide called Hope for the Day, that is now hosted on the Village of Westmont Library YouTube channel. So if you have a chance, check that out. And if any of you guys want to get ahold of me, my email address is hope@hftd.org. Again, I wish you all well. Thank you very much for the support, guys. Have a great evening.
Well, thank you for what you do, not realizing it's the 10th leading cause of death in adults. So on behalf of the village, I'm going to present Chris with the proclamation. I can't shake your hand. There you go. Good luck, good luck on Saturday. So any questions?
I would just ask, your message was good, Joel, and the, we got most of it. There was a little bit of connection problems. Can you repeat both the website and then your email again?
Sure. The website is hopefortheday.org or hftd.org, and my email address is joel, J-O-E-L, at Hope for the day. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chris?
I don't know if the manager or the mayor can see me, but I'd just like to make a comment.
Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. I had opportunity to watch Joel's presentation through the library about the Hope for the Day program, and Joel, you are a rock star. You've got guitars behind you, but he's got some very good insight that we could all use. And it's a matter of, you know, if you don't have the depression, if maybe somebody else does, and you can help a family member or friend, and that's really his message, and it really breaks it all down so we can understand it. I encourage everybody to watch that video. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, trustee Barker. I appreciate it, man.
Seeing no other comments, I...
Mr. Mayor, I just was wondering if, why Chris was here, if he wanted to also take advantage to give his public service message on texting and driving.
Another personal experience.
Another personal experience.
I would absolutely love to give that message. Just real quick, back on June 2nd, I was on my way home from work on my motorcycle, and there was a girl who was, I don't know if she was texting or if she was on her phone, but she ran a stop sign and ran into me. Five-day in the hospital, three-hour surgery. I should be up and walking fully by mid-September. Don't text and drive.
Yeah, there's your public service announcement from someone who lived through that. Again, good luck on Saturday, and this is a great... And I ask Finance Director and Assistant Village Manager Parker to read.
Proclamation states, "Whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the more than 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in the Village of Westmont play a key role in maintaining economic health in Westmont, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding, reporting, and depositing. And whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually complying with myriad federal and state wage and tax laws. And whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making sure they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. And whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. And whereas the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week to give additional support to the efforts of the people who work in Westmont, Illinois, and of the payroll profession. Therefore be it resolved, Ronald J. Gunter, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Mayor of the Village of Westmont, Illinois, does hereby proclaim the first full week of September as Payroll Week for the Village of Westmont, Illinois."
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made in second. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. I understand we have a couple ladies in the audience who'd like to come up and give us some more information about the proclamation. Director Parker, present it to you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Katie Staffelt, and I am the President of the Chicago Chapter, and I am with Kathy Miziesewski, the Vice President of the Chicago Chapter. First, I would like to say, I, I live in Westmont, and when I was very young, I was like, anyways, I was very young, we moved into Westmont. We thought, "Westmont is a good place to live." And then we built a house in Westmont. And Westmont's not a good place to live, it's a great place to live because of all the hard work and dedication everybody in this room and on the TVs puts into this community and to the residents, and I truly appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And now I'd like to thank you for the proclamation and for always supporting the payroll, the payroll profession. Our, our goal with the chapter is to educate payroll professionals, to help them become certified. And if they don't want to become certified, if they just want to learn more about the profession because they want to get into it, or they're in it and they're not totally sure what they're doing, that's what we do, that is our goal. And in the height of the COVID, when it first kicked in, we were in the, in the middle of our CPP and FPC review classes, Certified Payroll Professional or Fundamental Payroll Professional. I think we were, what, four weeks in? We were four weeks into it. We have our classes at ADP up in Elkhorn Village, they've been kind enough to give us the space, and we got two weeks left, and now we have no place to go. This lady, right here, and two other members of my board, Dave Scorsa and Jerry Gradel, got on the phone and they created virtual classes for the last two classes, and they were full Saturdays. They was getting the, getting the instructors, getting the attendees, getting them all online. We can't do what we do without, you guys know what it's like to run a village. That's what we're doing with the payroll profession, and that, that's, that's what we do, that is our goal. Kathy, do you have anything that you want to...
Well, I just wanted to add to this, that I'm not a resident of Westmont, but I love visiting here. And my best friend lives here, so. And, and as she said, she was a, you know, a youngster when she moved in, and I know what it's like to be dedicated to your village because I've spent all but six months of my life in my village, so I've lived there my whole life. And, and so, this is a beautiful town, and we so appreciate your continued support for National Payroll Week. And it honors all the workers in America and in Westmont, and then the payroll professionals. And as it said, you know, we, we contribute $2.4 trillion to the government, we continue, the payroll professionals contribute 70% of the revenue that goes to the United Treasury, United States Treasury. So, I, I, we do want to continue educating our members, which are over the greater Chicagoland area, and, you know, that is our basic reason, and to be involved in community events. We sponsor many different things, including the troops, the...
Run McDonald House.
Run McDonald House. We, there's another local, Phil's Friends, that works with cancer patients. And we've done many things in the past, relays for breast cancer, et cetera. So, you know, we like to contribute back to the community, and we appreciate your community for supporting us.
Appreciate your word, too.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
I like her mask that says, "Be kind."
She had it upside down when she worked at the car.
She goes, "You're upside down."
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to new business. A, amended water meter reading agreement. Board to consider in ordinance approving an amended water meter, meter, reading agreement with Flag Creek Water Reclamation District. And I guess I'm turning to Director Parker.
Sure, I'm happy to talk through that. So as part of our utility billing process, we provide information to the sanitary district. We give them something in electronic format so it can actually work, and then we also, per our contract, give them a really big stack of papers. And they come and pick up the stack of papers and the electronic file, and so, this agreement basically is moving into a more modern age where we can just send it electronically and that they're not required to come pick it up and we're not required to print out huge reams of paper.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. On to question. Seeing that roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, B, Verizon License Agreement. Board to consider in ordinance approving a third amendment to license agreement with Verizon for the, for use of village right-of-way. And I'm going to turn to Attorney Zemanek for additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pretty straightforward amendment. Verizon purchased the fiber optic communications network that was owned by WOW, and we're simply amending the agreement to reflect that change in ownership. There's a fiber optic network within the village right-of-ways at various locations. Previously, WOW paid a license fee, which was pretty minimal, to the village. Verizon, as a telecommunications retailer, is exempt from that fee, and the amendment also points that out.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little. Second, Barry.
Motion made in second to approve the amended agreement. Any comments? Seeing that roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, C, Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to consider in ordinance declaring certain village-owned vehicles as surplus property. And I think I'll have Director Parker or Chief Riley.
I, I can talk through it. It's largely a housekeeping matter, it's kind of the crossing the Ts, dotting the Is. Number of months ago, we talked with the village board about how, as opposed to trading in an ambulance when we purchased a new one, we were going to be selling the ambulance to a neighboring community, and with that, we need to declare it surplus, so the board is aware of the purchase, aware of the sale, our sale and their purchase, and we're now simply having the board declare it surplus.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. On to question.
Hey, I'm just curious, where is this going? Do we know yet?
So it was purchased by Loves Park. Where is that at? Rockford, all right.
By Rockford.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
That's great.
Any other comments? Seeing that roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, D, Code of Ordinance Text Update. Chapter 42 Fire. Board to consider in ordinance amending Chapter 42 Fire Prevention, Fire Protection, and Emergency Services of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to update the areas of mutual aid. Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just another housekeeping issue to correct certain sections reflecting the current municipalities and fire service listed within our Code of Ordinances for mutual aid and fire services.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made in second.
I believe it went to Little and Guzzo.
Okay, Little and Guzzo. They beat you to it. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, E, New Class 25 Liquor License. Board to consider in ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 10-36 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to create a new Class 25 liquor license to allow naditoriums to sell alcoholic beverages for the consumption on the premises. I've asked that we postpone this, we need to do additional research, so I would need a motion to postpone this item for a future meeting.
Motion to postpone to a future meeting, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Attorney Zemanek, anything to add?
No, I, I think there's a meeting in the next week or so, so this might be on, in, back on the agenda in the next four meetings.
Good. Any other comments? Now I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous, anybody have any miscellaneous, other than my daughter telling me to put my mask on? But I'm social distancing, this is six feet, so.
I just want to, and I meant to do this at the beginning, to thank that Public Works Department over, after the storm on Monday, they were terrific, they got streets cleaned, I mean, they were out there, so thank you, Public Works, you're the best.
And our fire department made sure that the area north of Ogden was safe for the residents in our fire protection district, so, thank you. Any other? Manager May, no?
No, I guess, you know, with the distancing comment, I just wanted to point out, we actually received today, not enough to set it up, we, there's only a few of us here, so we're able to separate, but we have the Plexiglas dividers for this room so we can get more in here. And the other people that meet in this room, Planning and Zoning Commission, School District, were closer to full onsite meetings.
And it's sanitized, there's still fog in the building, so...
Yeah, on schedule.
See, when I'm, they warned me to wear the mask or else I can't see my grandkids, so I, you know, she, all of a sudden said, "Put your mask on," like Spencer, so...
Whatever incentive it takes, right?
Yeah. Any other comments?
Are...
Yep.
I just have a question, and it's kind of personal, but maybe the, the community wants to know, are the Village Waste stickers still being sold at Village Hall?
The Village... Waste, Lionscape.
Yes.
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 Okay.
I think...
I wasn't aware if we were letting us in to do that or not, but...
Yeah. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made in second to adjourn. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.